Good morning, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'll just take a moment to make some introductions. First, our panel, on my far left, Mr. Dominic Gully; on my immediate left, Ms. Sophia Ruddock; on my near right, Mr. Rick Ross; and on my far right, Mr. Bill Dalton. We also have at the far-left end of this desk our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Barb Bartosik; and in front of us, we have Barbara's support staff. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use ShareScreen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure today is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. However, we will bring forward and deal with, out of order, applications where the applicant has requested deferral, and I believe we have one of those today, but beyond that, everything will be heard in order. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair, should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of this hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating remotely through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Now, before hearing our first item today, we will require confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on August twenty-eighth. So could we have a motion to adopt those minutes, please?
Chair, I'm going to move that the minutes of the August twenty-eighth meeting be adopted as written.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, and a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? So the minutes of the August twenty-eighth meeting have been adopted. Okay, I will ask firstly of the panel, do any of you have any declarations of interest for items in this time slot?
Yes, I have two for items three and fifteen, as Arcadus Architects are the Architect of Record, and I work at Arcadus, so to keep it clean, I will declare a conflict.
Okay, that's three and fifteen. And staff, are there any declarations of interest from anyone? No, okay. I'll just write down Bill's... Yep. Okay, so now we can go back to the order on the printed agenda, starting with item number one.
Mr. Chair, through you, and maybe confirmation, there is a deferral. Item number two.
Ah, yes, I haven't finished reading page three of my remarks. Oh, no, they do that. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any requests for a deferral today?
Item two.
Item two. Okay, then let's deal with that firstly. The agent is Marisa Rico?
No, Mr. Chair, the agent is Salvatore Creamy.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Rico, though, however, is an area resident, does want to speak.
Okay, so we'll invite her at the right time. So, Mr. Creamy.
Good morning, through you, Mr. Chair. Salv Creamy, address two-five-seven-two Eglington Avenue West, here to request a deferral for the subject property known as twenty Snowberry.
Yeah, if you could just explain why you'd like it deferred today?
Uh, yeah, so it's an as-built situation with an OTC on file, which you'll see in your documents. The reason for the deferral is a request came up about two weeks ago from planning to better the situation. We have made very significant improvements that will require some rework by the owner, but nonetheless, variances are being finalized. We have requested an updated zoning notice, which we don't have at this time, and once we do, we'll come back to present the full proposal.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Creamy. Panel, any questions for Mr. Creamy? No?
Chair, I do have a question, sorry. Mr. Creamy, I wanted to confirm you are having discussions with city planning with respect to the soft landscaping issue in the rear yard, and that's ongoing, is that correct? You are having conversations with them?
Yeah, correct. The only variance that we do have does pertain to soft landscaping within the rear yard. We have finalized what planning wants, and we got ninety-nine percent of the way there, so we're just waiting on the updated notice. For the record, too, though, I did go out and speak with the neighbor that will present today, and part of the changes did try and incorporate their concerns as well.
I just wanted confirmation that you are having conversations with planning, if the panel were to defer the application, and also you are waiting, you've requested a zoning review, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So let's invite Marisa Rico. Ms. Rico?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, good morning. Just to clarify before you introduce yourself, this is an app... A request for deferral of this item today. So we're not going to consider the merits of this application today. We're just going to consider whether or not to defer the application. So the input we need from you is whether or not you're agreeable to a deferral, to a later date.
No.
You're not?
No.
Okay, could you please explain why not?
Because I had taken some time off from work today, and also I had to make pre-arrangements for my elderly mother, so it's kind of hard sometimes to do that, to take time off.
Unfortunately, the agent isn't in a position to proceed today toward a decision. Your situation's...
When will the... When will the other...
Staff will schedule that. We're not going to sort of select a date at this time, but notice will be given in advance, whenever it is.
Okay. Okay, then.
Okay, well, I'm still going to put you down as a note that you're opposed to the deferral. Any questions?
This we heard then today, or can I go and go back to work, sorry?
You can go back to work, yes. Well, just wait until we make a decision in the next thirty seconds or so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So panel, questions, comments for Ms. Rico, or ready for a motion?
Chair, I prefer to make a motion.
Sure.
In view of the fact that the agent has confirmed that he is actually having conversations with city planning, and the fact also that he's asked for a zoning review, which is essential, I think it's a fair request to defer. I'm going to move deferral for the applicant to have further agent, to have further conversations with planning, and react on the notice from Toronto Building.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully, is there a seconder, Ms. Ruddock?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, item two has been deferred. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I failed to ask you if we have any applications to close today. Okay, good, thanks. Now we'll resume to the regular agenda, starting with item one. Fifty Gulf Valley Lane. I'm just going to do a little quick summary here. The purpose of this application is to construct a new rear deck. There's one variance. We have a clearance letter from TRCA, and we have four support letters. Panel, do we agree that this is a very straightforward application? And we do not need a presentation? Proceed on that basis? Adriah Durazzo, agent?
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Adriah Durazo from Replacement Design, located at one-sixty The Westway, Unit sixteen-eight in Etobicoke. I'm here today on behalf of the property owners at fifty Gulf Valley Lane.
Okay, thank you. So are you agreeable to not presenting to us? We don't think it's necessary, it's a very straightforward application, and reserving our right to ask any questions, if we have any? Are you okay with proceeding that way?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so we'll do that. So panel, any questions? Then let's go into committee for a decision.
Chair, I prefer to speak on this side. What we have before us on this application today is an issue with respect to height or elevation, height or elevation of a platform, and the issues that we should be examining are issues of overlook and privacy. This is a very large lot. What's being proposed is a deck that does conform to size. The only nonconformance is the fact that it's higher above the ground than typically the bylaw requests. In view of the fact that overlook and privacy is not an issue to the adjacent owners, technically and both visually, I'm going to move that the application be approved. TRCA has provided positive comments. There are no comments from urban forestry. There are no issues with respect to side yard. Move approval with no conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully. Before I invite a seconder, it's Adam, can you confirm there's no one here or at home that wishes to speak to this item?
There is no one, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion tabled by Mr. Gully, is there a seconder? Mr. Ross, thank you, all in favor? That item one is approved unanimously, thank you very much. See ya. Okay, moving on to item three. Six-hundred to six-twenty The East Mall. Purpose is to modify the development standards from the site-specific bylaw, six-seven-three-dash-twenty-sixteen OMB. And we have ten variances requested. And we have before us the agent, Kelly Smith.
Charlie Smith. Ironically, that's actually my mother's name, Kelly, so I'm not sure how that came up, but... Charlie Smith, agent on behalf of the applicant, Three Church Street, Toronto, Ontario, representing the applicant for six-hundred to six-twenty The East Mall.
Okay, so if you could present to us, please?
Of course. If we could pull up the presentation slides. And we can start on slide number two. So, as noted, this is a property that is subject to an existing OMB approval from 2016, which was approved for a two-tower development and one mid-rise building. In terms of adjacent context, to the north is another OLT approval for two tall buildings of twenty-four stories and eleven stories. To the east is a low-rise neighborhood and existing townhouses. The property does abut Highway four-twenty-seven to the west and Rathburn Road to the south. Next slide, please. So this is an oblique image of the East Mall looking to the west along Rathburn and the East Mall. As you can see, there's a number of applications that have been approved in recent years, ranging in heights from fourteen to twenty-four stories, and those parcels are highlighted in the black outlines, our subject site in the red. The purpose of today's application is to address adjustments to setbacks as a result of conversations with MTO and the off-ramp off of Rathburn there. All buildings notably are subject to a flight path height restriction, which dictates maximum heights. Next slide, please. So just for the committee's benefit, a brief timeline. So in 2015, the subject site was approved for a zoning bylaw amendment, which I'll refer to as the original approval. This contemplated an eleven-story mid-rise fronting the East Mall and two twenty-four-story towers on the west side of the property. A bylaw was enacted in 2016 to facilitate the approval. Many years later, a application was filed for site plan, which is still ongoing and open. And through that site plan process, after the 2016 original approval, the Ministry of Transportation requested additional setbacks along Highway four-twenty-seven. So the client, over the last number of years, has worked with MTO and city staff to facilitate a revised scheme, which we are now seeking approval today through the Committee of Adjustment, and have worked closely with planning staff to arrive at. Next slide, please. So this is the original approval. Just a couple things to highlight. The red indicates a fourteen-meter setback along the entirety of the west and southwest property lines. You'll note that there are three approved buildings, Tower A and B, which are the twenty-four-story elements, and then Tower C is along East Mall, which is eleven stories. The original approval was also subject to maximum floor plate sizes, eight-fifty, eight-hundred, and eight-hundred for the towers respectively. Next slide, please. So the variance application we're seeking today maintains the core principles of that original approval in keeping the twenty-four-story Towers A and B and an eleven-story mid-rise. The purple area on the left side of the image is the MTO widening that was requested through the site plan application, and as a result, that fourteen-meter setback protrudes further into the subject site, causing a rethink and reshift of those buildings on the west side. Through those discussions, there was an agreement to reduce setbacks in other areas that were previously fourteen, that are now seven, with the yellow highlight on the south. Next slide, please. So here is just a comparison of the two diagrammatic images showing the adjustments and setbacks from one to the other. Perhaps most notably, Tower B has basically been rotated, and they are now both north-south oriented buildings, and the tower floor plate of Tower C extends a little bit further north. Next slide. Just briefly, the variances consist of three categories: building height and setbacks, tower floor plate increases, and parking variances, and I'll describe each of these. Next slide, please. To secure the updated heights and setbacks, through discussions with city staff, we've provided an updated zoning diagram. So the dimensions and the numbers in red represent modifications. Just a couple highlights, I'll note on Tower A and B, the overall height has increased from sixty-eight meters to seventy-two meters approximately. Another key dimension that was secured between Tower B and C, a separation of twenty-two meters, it's a little bit small on this screen, but also additional dimensions have been added to the tower floor plates themselves to basically secure that maximum floor plate value. And we note that on the south, there's a seven-meter MTO setback that has been secured. That was that yellow dimension that ran along the property. Additional dimensions were added along the east side of the Tower C interfacing with the East Mall. Next slide, please. Again, these are the tower floor plate maximums, so we can see for Tower A to eight-fifty-four, an increase of four square meters.
Sir, your five minutes is almost up.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Lastly, I'll just skip to the tests, if I could. Thank you. I'll just note that a transportation letter was submitted by BA Group in support of the parking variances. So in terms of just maintaining intent and purpose of official plan, the site has been previously approved. It maintains the intent of the mixed-use areas designation to provide new uses. We are providing a compatible form that is consistent with the zoning bylaw. Minor modifications were made for tower floor plates in response to the MTO requests, and it's a desirable and appropriate use of land as it maintains the mixed-use function in the original approval. It's a lot to unpack. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So panel, questions or comments on the presentation?
Chair, excuse me, I have a question of assistance. Thank you so much for that comprehensive presentation. Are variances eight, nine, and ten new variances new in the sense that they're not related to the setback requirements from MTO?
Could you... Could we put the variances up on the screen so I can just view those, please? You said eight, nine, and ten, correct?
Actually, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
And if we could zoom in. So number seven pertains to non-residential vehicle spaces. There is retail space contemplated in Building C on the east side of the property. In the letter prepared by BA Group, the reduction in visitor parking does reflect current bylaw standards in five-six-nine-2013, and there is a local plaza that is part under the same ownership to the south, which does have service parking for retail uses. The uses in Tower C are intended to be, you know, smaller-scale community uses that would be walkable by the adjacent residents to the east. So that is for variance seven. And as for eight and nine, these are also parking-related. So in terms of loading spaces, there has been a rethink of how the loading was going to be arranged between Tower A and B and Tower C. For the variance, we are providing within Tower A and B on the west, a type G and two type C. There was a type C space required for the... For Tower C, that has been removed, and only a type B or type G is being provided. So collectively, as a whole, the loading still will continue to function appropriately and maintain the needs of the site. Finally, the residential vehicle parking rate has been minorly reduced. We are still providing an appropriate amount of parking just based on the context of the area, but this does reflect the city's overall direction in terms of parking reduction and less reliance on automobiles.
And Transportation Services has not provided any negative comments on that? There are no comments?
That is correct. We've liaised with both planning and transportation, and they're satisfied with the outcomes of the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Panel, any other questions or comments?
You mentioned that two of the buildings, the orientation, had been changed. What impact does that have?
So if I may, could we go back to the presentation to the revised Schedule B slide with the red lines on the zoning diagram? Through our discussions, Mr. Ross, with city planning, it was really key for us to maintain the tall building design guidelines intent in terms of separation. So on the left image, you can see that Tower A and B were originally kind of perpendicular and almost like an L shape. Tower B has rotated to be a north-south orientation. Now, what is important to city planning here was that that twenty-five-meter separation between the towers was maintained, and that has been done in this orientation. So that was what I was speaking to in terms of tower orientation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Adam, are there any speakers in the room or at home?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I guess we can proceed to discuss if we need to in committee or make a motion.
Just as a discussion within members, we do have a report from planning, August twenty-ninth, and their report does explain pretty much and confirms what Mr. Smith has explained today. And I do believe that the majority of the variances were triggered by the MTO requirement. The four variances related to parking, loading, et cetera, have been clearly justified in the BA report, in my view.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Sir, is that a motion?
That was just for members' comments and that there's no urban forestry conditions, so...
Could you formulate your thoughts into a motion?
Sure, no problem. Chair, I'm going to move that the application for the ten variances be authorized, that the application be approved with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock, all in favor? That should unanimously approve, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We did it without you.
It's tough, though. Okay, moving on to item 4, 24 Robaldon Road. The purpose of this application is to construct a new deck in the rear yard. There are two variances. We have a Metro Links advisory. We have no other comments or conditions from city departments. We have no public interest, I don't believe. Adam, could you confirm that?
Nothing on my list, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Panel, may we consider this to be straightforward and not requiring a presentation? We're good? So the agent is Anthony Zambri. Mr. Zambri?
Mr. Chair, they were present at one point. They also didn't register. Oh, never mind, they registered under their different name. I remember now. Yeah.
Hi.
Mr. Zambri?
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
As a reminder quickly, Anthony, this confusion that I talked about during the mic check, maybe next time log in with your name instead of the company.
Yeah, just, the only reason I say that is because the agent's name is my company name, so I wanted to make it as direct as possible, but no problem for next time.
Can you just give us your name and address?
Sure. My address or the address of the property? Our, our client address is 7250 Keel Street, Concord, Ontario. It's for Land Design Canada, Inc., and my name is Anthony Zambri, representing 24 Robaldon Road.
Okay, so I don't know if you were listening in, but the panel agrees that we do not require a presentation from you on this very
That's great.
very straightforward application. So are you okay with us proceeding? If we have any questions, we may ask, but...
Absolutely, yeah, just to save time, that'd be great.
Okay, let's do that, then. So are there any questions, comments?
Chair, I was going to ask the agent, how did the changes come about? We have a revised application today and revised in the betterment of the application. How did the changes come about?
Those changes were directly because of the porch that was in the front, and it didn't necessarily showcase that on the survey. So there was a discrepancy with the survey, but that got sorted out. Thank you.
Ms. Rutter?
Yeah, if there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. I don't see any further questions, so I move that, that this application be accepted. Find that it's minor in nature and consistent with the four tests.
Thank you, Ms. Rutter. Is there a second or for Ms. Rutter? Thank you, Mr. Ross. All in favor? That application has been approved unanimously? Thank you, Mr. Zambri. Okay, item number five is 142 Thompson Avenue. We have, oh, did, did we clarify that that motion was with respect to the revised application? Or can we do that retroactively? Yeah. Okay, so number five is a revised application. The purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, a new covered front platform, and a new deck in the rear yard. There are three variances. We have TRCA is satisfied with this application. They do point out a permit from them is required. And we have one letter of opposition, two letters of concern, and one registered speaker.
Now, Mr. Chair, I have a concern that the revisions to variance one, they're actually making the variance worse. So if they're proposing not, then it has to be deferred.
Okay. Let's, let's just bring the agent in for a bit of a chat on this, then.
Hello, good morning. My name is Daniel Vinciani. I'm the agent representing the owners. My address is, could you help me dear please, Toronto, Ontario?
Thank you. So were you, were you listening in? Did you hear the Deputy Secretary of Treasures' remarks?
Yes.
What's your response to that?
I actually did apply with a waiver, but there was a discrepancy with examiner's interpretation of aggregate of the side yard. So I was able to secure a revised zoning notice from the zoning supervisor and was able to submit that in time before the public hearing notice. Was sent out. So the variances that we have on the screen are the correct variances that we're looking to apply for.
Barbara?
The way this revision is done means the notice was not mailed out. So we did not give public notice with these variances.
Okay, so if the notice wasn't mailed out, that's an issue.
I'm not aware of, of that not being sent out. Because we did put the sign accordingly as per the requirements, 10 days ahead of time, and the updating zoning notice was also included before the, the letters were sent out. I have emailed from gentlemen at the committee.
Well, according to the information we have, it wasn't sent out within the requirements of the Planning Act. So I, I, I believe we have, this is what we call an automatic deferral, actually, when something doesn't meet the Planning Act procedures, stipulated procedures. So I think we're going to have to at least potentially discuss and consider deferring this.
So it looks like staff have checked, and it looks like the revision was submitted August 21, which is after the mail, the notice was mailed.
So Chair, just wanted to ask a question of the agent applicant.
Yeah.
The issue we have before us is that the notice, the original notice, has changed, making, in one instance, the west side lot line less than the original notice had indicated. And the original notice, the west lot, west side lot line, was 0.98. And now what's being proposed is 0.87. We, we appreciate the fact that the change is small, but still, the notice to the public has to be correct and accurate.
Okay. If I can explain that? So because we've been working with TRCA for the last six months of this, and it was determined that there is significant flood elevation in, in that occurrence, and it was, the house needed to, to have waterproofing and...
May I understand, Chair, I'm gonna interrupt. You're giving us evidence now. We're trying to deal with the issue of whether or not we have to defer because of the technicality of the notice not being correctly circulated to the neighbors.
You know, with all due respect, there's nothing really to discuss here. It's an automatic deferral. We have to defer it. It doesn't meet the Planning Act requirements. It's an open and shut case.
Okay.
Appreciate your sentiments on TRCA, but that's really irrelevant to the matter at hand here. So we have a Richard Carter present? Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity. Testing, testing?
Yeah, I'm going to. Yeah, just before you proceed, this has gone from an application to consider today, and that's why you're here, to a need to defer. So whatever remarks you have on the merits of this application won't be heard by us today. What we are interested in is your opinion. Are you okay with deferring this application to a later date after the notice has been published in the proper manner?
And with the opportunity now to
Absolutely.
discuss. Yes, we're in favor of that.
That's, that's all we need to hear. And sorry to bring you out for that.
So I appreciate that, because I did take the morning off work as well.
Yeah.
And, but I think it's very important for the agent to hear our comments, because nobody, and I repeat, nobody, has made any attempt to knock on our door, show us the plans, have a discussion.
You're kind of urging into presenting your, the merits to us.
Sure, okay.
I've tuned out, sir, with all due respect. You've given me the answer I need. You can say whatever's on your notes in a month or two when it's back here.
The agent would be, benefit the agent to hear them now.
No, I'm not going to hear them now.
Okay. Thank you.
So we need a motion to defer?
I, I move a motion to defer, and I encourage the agent as well to connect with the neighbors, to hear their concerns, and try to adjust them if they can.
Thank you, Ms. Rutter. Second or for Ms. Rutter's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Item five is deferred unanimously?
So just for the agent's clarity, that's deferred to fix the corrected variances, but also to consult with the concerned neighbor?
Correct, that was my motion.
Moving on to item six, 29 Tasker Road. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are eight variances. We have six letters of support. Urban Forestry has requested condition one. And I'll ask the panel if anyone desires a presentation on this, or are we satisfied that it's straightforward? Straightforward? Agreed? Okay. And Adam, are there any members of the public?
No, Mr. Chair.
No participation, all right. Mr. Benzkowski? Mr. Benzkowski?
Good morning, committee.
Hi, good morning. Were, were you listening in? We've just, we've concluded that we don't need a presentation on this straightforward application. Are you okay for us to proceed, potentially having a question or two for you?
I am, Mr. Chair, but, but in full transparency, there are two other changes that are not reflected in the marked up here that I did agree with to planning. So I would like to make those changes, again, just for transparency of what we agreed to with planning. So there are two other reductions to the variances that are just not shown on the screen. If I could just make those and put them into the record?
Tell us what you've got in mind.
Number four is to be reduced to 20.74 meters, which would be the building length. And number five, which is the building depth, is to be reduced to 19.12 meters.
Okay.
But that is reflective of the reduction of the coverage. But I just, I, I did come to that agreement with planning, and you don't, you do not have a planning report in front of you recommending that, but I did discuss that with planning. So I just wanted to keep my word of what I did do with planning.
So Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, do we have any flexibility, notwithstanding what I said an hour ago about not entertaining revisions on the day of the hearing?
Well, they can make things better, but do we have those plans?
Yes, you do, Madam Chair.
Okay, can you
Yes, you too, Deputy Secretary. You do, they are filed.
Right, so your waiver should have noted that, so you neglected to do that. Could you tell us those revisions again?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury. The variance number four is reduced to 20.74 meters, and variance number five is reduced to 19.12 meters.
Mr. Chair, members, the updates are actually on the screen.
Yes, correct. I did submit them, I just submitted them under another cover.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good to proceed, then? And discuss or go right to a motion with the two revisions noted by Mr. Benzkowski? Two variances, four and five? Oh, and you're, you're okay with the urban forestry condition one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Chair, I'm going to move that the various be authorized on the revised application. It's ameliorated the application. The coverage has been reduced. The length and the depth of the building have been reduced for the betterment. Move approval subject to first through condition number one.
And you're removing approval with respect to the revised application plus the revisions made orally today?
Correct.
Is there a second or for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Okay, item six is unanimously approved, and I have been asked to call a short break. So can we say, Mr. Gully, 15 minutes? So we'll reconvene?
We'll do 10:30.
Mr. Chair, are you
Yeah, yeah. Because it's 10:16 now, so we can do 10:30.
Yes, that was noted.
Yeah. Thank you. We'll take a short recess and reconvene at 10:30. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. You want some music?
Alright, Mr. Chair, I think we'll
Can we proceed?
We'll start, come back here, yeah. So if there's anyone listening online, we're gonna restart now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item seven, twenty-six Ravenscrest Drive. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are four variances. And I've noted that, in my opinion, this is very straightforward and not require a presentation. Agreed? Good? Okay. So. And Adam, would you mind just confirming, I don't have anyone registered to speak on this one?
I also do not have anyone registered to speak on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good. Good, okay. So the agent, if we could speak to, please, is Peter Scouran?
Peter, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Chair, during microphone check, we did not have a connection with Peter. And that could explain why we can't hear him right now. Peter, go ahead.
Maybe ask for Piotr? You've been unmuted. So we can't hear you, sir. If you want to, try calling in.
Microphone check for Peter, go ahead.
Morning.
Ah, there we go, thank you.
Hi, hi, Peter, it's, it's, uh, Donald Taylor, the, the chair, speaking to you. Um, I don't know if you heard the panel conversation about, uh, how we treat this application in terms of a presentation. We don't believe we need one from you. This is a pretty straightforward application, four, four variances. Would you be okay with, uh, proceeding without a presentation from you and, uh, with us reserving the right to ask a question or two if we have any? Is that okay?
Yes, of course. Yes, of course, I'm happy to answer your questions.
That's good. So I'll ask the first question. Are you aware of and in agreement with urban forestry condition three? And transportation review, two recommended conditions of approval? Are you aware?
Uh, I, we are familiar with, uh, with the, uh, forestry condition, uh, for, for tree planting.
Condition three, yep.
Yeah, we are, we are, uh, aware of that, and the homeowner is, uh, is fine with that, absolutely. Um, can you repeat the second, uh, condition?
It's the transportation review, they have two conditions of approval. I, I can, um, I can just read
I, uh, I don't have that document, uh
Okay, I, I'm just gonna read them off for you.
Mr. Chair, we also have it up on the screen for the agent to review if they're looking at their computer.
Excellent.
Additionally, that file can be downloaded from the application information center.
Okay, got it, yep. Uh, so, that, uh, that should not be a problem.
Okay, good. Uh, panel, any other questions or comments? None? So let's go into committee for, uh, a decision.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as the application and the applicant has addressed the TRCA issues. I believe the application meets the four test subject to the transportation of forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a seconded for Mr. Dalton? Seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully. All in favor? That's, uh, item seven is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Scouran. Yeah, I don't, I don't repeat the conditions, I just say approved. Item eight, eight, Walton Crescent. Purpose is to construct a one-story addition at the southwest corner of the existing dwelling. There are two variances. We have, uh, ravine and natural features, no conditions. They do point out that the application for a permit from them is under review, and TRCA is okay. The agent is Barad Sudbaxch? That's you, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I was just gonna talk to the panel a little bit. I don't, this is pretty straightforward, I don't think we really need to if you're okay, just wait for the answer. So are we agreeable, panel? We don't need, uh, your presentation? Okay. So, uh, do any of you have any questions or comments for Mr. Sudbaxch? No? Then let's make a decision.
And quickly, for the record, no, nobody on my list of attendees.
What's that?
Nobody on the list of attendees.
Oh, I, oh, I didn't ask.
No.
Thanks for answering, anyway.
Uh, Chair, two variances before us today on this application. Uh, one relates to coverage going from thirty to thirty-five point four, and one relates to a side yard on the south side, one point eight to one point four one. Uh, both variances are nominal, they're reasonable, move approval, uh, subject to, um, no, there, there's no UFC and TRCA is okay, so no conditions, move approval, no conditions.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a seconded?
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, thank you, all in favor? That is, uh, approved unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item nine. Two fifty Wincott Drive and forty-six twenty Eglington Avenue West. Purpose is to construct residential units on the mechanical penthouse level of Building C. There are four variances. We have a Metro Links advisory and two letters of opposition. And two registered, uh, public participat-, participants. So, Mr. Ryan Doherty?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Just give us your address and then, uh, make your presentation?
Yes, so my address is Three Church Street, Suite two hundred in Toronto, and, uh, I'm agent to the, to the applicant.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just would like to point out, we did get a late submission from the councillor yesterday after we had already sent out your late materials. So the councillor's asking for a deferral of the application, um.
Mr. Chair, it's up on the screen now.
So that may be reviewed fully in the context of the entire site, and once the variables contained under separate applications to other authorities are settled and known.
Okay, Mr. Doherty, perhaps you could just reference that as part of your presentation?
Sure.
If you can do it all within five minutes.
Yeah, I, I think I can, can make do. Um, I do have a, a presentation package. If, if staff would be able to pull it up once, once we're done looking at the councillor's letter. Thank you.
Are the members okay with moving along? Dom?
I don't need it anymore. Do anybody want that left out?
Chair, I was just wondering, uh, being a letter from the councillor, um, I haven't had time to read it. Um, I'm just wondering, he's asking for a deferral, um, not, not that the panel is considering that. Um, just wondering in terms of protocol, uh, if, uh, member of the public or, um, a councillor or a department asks for a deferral, uh, should we be discussing that first or not?
Uh, so a councillor's letter would have the same weight as anyone who submits from the public, um. I guess it all depends if you see merit in a deferral, because, and the applicant should be able to address that. But you shouldn't hear presentations from the applicant, all the neighbours, and then decide to defer. So perhaps give the applicant an opportunity now to address that request, and then you can decide if you want to proceed. So, right now, your time would be solely on the deferral request, not your merits. You'll get your five minutes if they choose to defer.
Great, so the deferral will be discussed first, and then an additional five minutes for presentation?
If the panel decides not to defer, then the applicant will make their presentation, as well as the neighbours and the rebuttal.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, thank you, Chair.
So once we've, once we've considered the deferral item, do we need a motion to say yes or no? Okay. So I guess let's hear, uh, about the request for a deferral.
Sure.
Agreeable with that?
No, we're not in support of a deferral. Uh, we'd like the application to be heard today. Um, we understand that there have been a number of applications that have, that affect the site and that have come forward to the committee. Um, however, we think that this is a very technical application pertaining to the Building C phase of the development, which is intended to, um, proceed under the existing zoning. And the matters we're talking about today, which relate to, um, essentially a reallocation of units within the building, And the matters we're talking about today, which relate to, um, essentially a reallocation of units within the building, um, does not have effects on other parts of the site or the broader rezoning application that's happening on, uh, for the other two buildings on the site. So we're not in support of a deferral and would like the application to be heard today. Thank you.
Okay, so on that basis, I'm comfortable with, uh, proceeding on the basis of the application that's before us.
So Chair, may I ask a question of the speaker?
Sure.
Um, there are no changes to the exterior of the building in the sense that the appearance or the impact on the neighbourhood or the area would, um, be triggered because of these variances today.
That's correct, and as I can explain further in my presentation, the only, I guess you would call it sort of material physical change is the three percent increase in the footprint of the mechanical penthouse level. Um, however, that level is actually going to be lower in height and still comply with the angular plane that was established in the previous zoning approval. So-
And is that on the roof?
Pardon me, sir?
Is that on the roof?
Yes, it's the mechanical penthouse level on the roof.
On the roof. Thank you.
Okay, so we haven't taken any time from you yet. Now we'll start hearing your presentation.
Okay, so just so we know, the committee is not intending to defer based on the applicant's intent?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I made kind of an assertion, but are, are we in agreement?
I just had one question. So the, oh, you took it off. The councillor letter that was up there, so the third bullet point refers to the, um, to the, um, limit the height of mechanical penthouse buildings to maximum of six. So that's, that, your application does address that, like, that, that's one issue that is impacted by the application that you have before us today?
We're not going beyond the six meters. It's actually being reduced for the most part.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, do we require, uh, the agreement of the interested participants to proceeding with this? They, they came on the understanding we were proceeding toward a decision, so I'm assuming they're, they're not interested in a deferral. They're here to speak to the merits of this application. But do I need to get that affirmed from them?
I think it all only would be warranted if you're considering a deferral. If you're proceeding with the application, then they'll get their chance to speak on the application.
I don't, we can clarify that there's no motion, there's no support for a deferral on the panel and then proceed with, on the merits?
Yeah, and I guess maybe I'm breaking the procedure. I don't, I don't, I, I thought I asked, do we need a motion? I was just looking for a nod. Do you, do you want a motion to decide on the deferral? Does that make us feel better or do we need that? Can we just, or, or-
I don't think you need a motion.
Does anybody have a problem with proceeding with this application today?
No.
We're okay? Proceed? Rick?
Yep, we're all good. Okay, so we're gonna proceed. We're gonna start the clock.
Great. If, if we could go to my wonderful, and we can start on page two. Thank you. Um, so just by way of background, this new minor variance application for this site has arisen out of work that's been done through the detailed design process and the building permit process for Building C. Um, and as mentioned to this committee before, Building C is a purpose-built rental project that has city and federal government funding to deliver seventy-four affordable rental units. And so given the current market environment, one of the things that the applicant has been doing is exploring ways through this process to make Building C more efficient in terms of its layout and overall constructability. One of the things that came out of that process was a decision to implement geothermal. And so a geothermal energy system provides numerous sustainability benefits. And in this case, will provide for a low emission and efficient heating and cooling system within the building by utilizing the stable temperature of the earth. So that equipment is located in the underground and below the building itself. Um, and so what this means is that there is no longer a need for a traditional rooftop mechanical penthouse, things like a cooling tower and those kinds of things. Um, and so the use of geothermal, in our view, frees up space to reallocate uses within the broader envelope. In this case, the applicant is seeking to relocate dwelling units onto the former mechanical penthouse level. However, to be clear, this application does not propose an increase in the number of units or any change to the required unit mix. Um, just for the committee's consideration, city staff are aware of this application. We've been working with them on this application. And to my knowledge, no comments or concerns have been raised. So as shown here, the site is occupied by the Richview Square Shopping Centre and vacant lands. We can go to the next page. And it's within, uh, proximity of two stations along the Eglington Crosstown West extension. We can go to the next slide. So again, just for background, a previous rezoning was approved in 2021 to allow for a multi-building development on this site. The application before you today pertains to Building C, which is Phase One, and highlighted in the red color. Um, and so there are several active applications on this site, as you know, including a new rezoning for the balance of the lands. We can go to the next slide, please. So we are requesting a total of four variances. And essentially what they do are variances one and two are to permit a minor increase in overall GFA by seven hundred square meters. And variances three and four pertain to permitting residential units on the mechanical penthouse floor. And then, as I mentioned, to increase the coverage of that floor by three percent. We can go to the next page. So the proposal seeks a GFA increase of seven hundred square meters, of which six hundred and seventy square meters is residential. The zoning bylaw sets out maximums for GFA on a site-wide basis. However, these increases are to be allocated to the Building C phase only. There is no change in the overall number of dwelling units at three hundred and seventy, and the development continues to meet the minimum two and three-bedroom unit mix requirements. A benefit of reallocating dwelling units onto the mechanical floor is that the development is able to actually accommodate a nine-unit increase in the number of two-bedroom units. And the number of studio units has been decreased and traditional one-bedroom units have been increased. We can go to the next slide. So with respect to built form, the requested variances would result, in our opinion, no substantive massing changes. As currently permitted, Building C may have a height of forty-three meters plus an additional six meters for the mechanical penthouse floor, so forty-nine meters. The current zoning allows for amenity space to be located on the mechanical penthouse floor. And so the variances would maintain that roof height of forty-three meters. However, the dwelling units on that floor, shown in the green color, would have a height of four point three meters. So it's lower than what's permitted. And then there are some areas, such as the elevator overrun and garbage shaft, which continue to project up to that six-meter height threshold. So you're still maintaining that overall forty-nine meters. We can go to the next page. So as shown here, much of the revised mechanical floor, where it says forty-seven point three meters, would now be at a lower height versus what is permitted as of right, which is forty-nine meters for the mechanical floor. Only the areas with the black outline, being the elevator overrun and garbage shaft, would be at the full forty-nine meter permission. In terms of coverage, the bylaw permits the mechanical penthouse to be fifty-two percent of the roof area and must comply with a forty-five-degree angular plane projected from the east side-
Mr. Jordy, you have twenty seconds if you could wrap it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just wrapping up. And must comply with a forty-five-degree angular plane from the east side of Wincott Drive. Um, in this case, the requested variances would result in a coverage of fifty-five percent. However, we think this is appropriate, given the reduced height, as I mentioned. And if we go to the next slide, that the revised mechanical penthouse continues to fall within the required angular plane, which is demonstrated here. So I'll just conclude by saying, we think that these variances are technical, we think that they're supportable and meet the four tests. The implementation, implementation of geothermal meets the city's sustainability goals and results in additional two-bedroom units um, without an overly material change in form. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordy. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Jordy?
So you mentioned about affordable units. Is that using the city's definition of affordable units?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, uh, Mr. Jordy.
Thank you.
Now, I have, Adam, two participants registered and apparently they're both here in person.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
We don't have anybody in addition online?
As far as I know, that is, we do not.
Okay. So let's invite, uh, Mr. Barry Morrison to the podium.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, good, thank you. Good morning.
Yes, Barry Morrison, One Ireland Court, Etobicoke, Ontario. And, uh, I am here as a resident, third party, I guess. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd also thank, thank Ryan for his capable presentation. I think, uh, thank you very much. I think that, uh, overall, on this application, we, uh, we have a, uh, concern along the lines of, there's so many variances that have proceeded. Um, and I guess that the question is always, what's, what's the next one that's coming along and why can't it be done comprehensively? In terms of the, the height issue, uh, it, it seems very technical, uh, when you first look at it. But if you look at it in a little more depth, uh, you, you'll realize that when council approved this matter, height was a very serious matter. It was a question of, is this a mid-rise development that can be approved or does it project into the tall building range? At the time, the, the design guidelines of the city set eleven stories as the maximum height of mid-rise. Not the average height, but the maximum height. And the, the proposal was consciously reduced from thirteen stories that the applicant wanted to eleven in their approval. Now, in doing that approval, um, the, the developer argued that could he please have not an eleven-story height cap on this building, as was going to be imposed on the other two buildings, because he wanted to put in a supermarket and required two, uh, double-height commercial floors to do that. So council basically acceded to it. It was put to the community. Can you agree to that? The community said, fine, in the interest of having a complete community and having a, a retail component saved for the site, for the community, let's go along with it. So they went along with a forty-three, uh, meter height measure instead of eleven stories. The other two buildings were held at forty meters and thirty-nine to ensure eleven, uh, stories in height. So somewhere along the line, the developer chose to not have the commercial food store and asked to have his, uh, floor space turned into simply residential floors, so he had additional floors. And during that particular variance, which was decided in November two thousand twenty-three, they, in consultation with the planning department, put a cap of, of four hundred and seventy units on that building. But what that really involved was a transfer of a hundred and thirty units from Buildings A and B to Building C. And if you look at the average GFA per unit, roughly a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Now, the committee, uh, did approve that. And, uh, the result is that Building A and Building B are now short a hundred and thirty thousand square, square meter, or feet. And, uh, that effectively means, and, and they're short a hundred and thirty units. If you look at that in terms of the bylaw, and, and all available GFA was assigned to Building B, Building A can't even be built. Not, not a single square foot of Building A can be built. And that's a pretty, pretty outrageous situation, but apparently, uh, and, and I have to presume the developer was taking comfort that, at the same time, he had, he had applied for a rezoning for Buildings A and B. Uh, it was a little different when he first applied, but it was reduced to Building A and B, where he sought to increase the overall yield of the site from five hundred and eighty-seven units to over a thousand. And so I guess he, he had the view that, well, maybe I'm optimistic and I'm gonna get those units back when I rezone. But the reality is, it's a very unusual situation that a variance has been granted that will now not allow the development the council approved to proceed. Uh, it's, it's, uh, earth-shattering, really. In terms of the, of the actual height, going back to that height issue, um, this building is now going to have, uh, about, uh, a, a, a height limit on the residential of forty-seven point seven meters, which is significantly higher than the other two buildings at forty and thirty-nine. So this was a big issue for council. Whether it still is or not, I can't tell you. But, but it was certainly a key part of this approval. Now, something I find completely confusing, and I'm sure-
You've got ten seconds to, if you can wrap it up?
I don't know why they're asking for more GFA because they didn't do it in two thousand twenty-three when they were short a hundred and thirty thousand. They didn't, they didn't seek to add that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before you sit, I'll just ask the panel if there's any questions or comments for Mr. Morrison? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Just help me understand why you say Building A cannot be built?
Building A can't be built because in November, uh, two thousand twenty-three, the developer had a hundred and thirty units shifted from his overall cap of five hundred and eighty-seven units to Building C. That went along with the floor space of that number of units, which was roughly a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Building A was only intended and could only accommodate, the way that it was laid out, for a hundred and seventeen units. So they're short a hundred and thirty units. They can't build Building A and they still couldn't build another six or seven units in Building B. So it's, it's, it's quite perplexing. They're relying on another rezoning. They're relying on council, uh, approving the next rezoning, which, maybe they've got all the confidence in the world, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, one has to ask, is that prejudicing it? Now, they didn't ask to have the, the GFA transferred in two thousand twenty-three. They kept, they, they kept the GFA caps of, uh, I believe it was fifty, fifty, fifty-three thousand on the residential. But they didn't transfer any over. Now, for some reason, they're transferring some, or they're asking for an increase in GFA. I don't know why they didn't do that in, in two thousand twenty-three because, well, maybe if they did, it would be much more than a minor variance.
Chair, just one question, really fast question. Uh, thank you, Mr. Morrison. What's before us today, though, Barry? What's the additional GFA that they're asking for today on this application?
Well, they're asking for seven hundred. I don't know why. Because they've-
Seven hundred?
Presumably, they still have, they still have the, the overall caps, uh, available to the other building. I don't know why they're not stealing from the other buildings the way they did before.
But should the, should this committee be spec- speculating on the future of what you refer to as Building A?
As, as, as what?
Should this committee be considering and speculating, uh, the future of Building A? It's not here.
No, it's, it's, it's not here. I, I'm just pointing to, to a, a, a very serious irregularity right now that the bylaw can't be done because of a previous decision. I think that the point that this committee can be concerned about is, why did council set this, this building at forty-three meters? Uh, why did they give them the exemption to forty-three meters as opposed to the other buildings? Because there was gonna be a commercial component that they've gotten rid of. And now, uh, now they want to increase it again by another, uh, four point seven meters. So I think that, that, uh, one would have to presume that council had a real concern here. And I would suggest, I would suggest that it should be council that makes this decision.
Uh, Barry, are there any reports from planning on this, this before us today?
Well, I don't know. You know, it's interesting. It's, it's, it's interesting because I did actually write planning last week. And, uh, I wrote on, the sixth of, of September, when I heard about it, I didn't get a notice for this application. I, I presume others did. But I did write planning and I asked them five questions. What's the original GFA resin commercial sought for, for Building C? What's the resulting resin other GFA in Building C after the November transfer as a hundred and thirty units? What was the resin commercial availability of GFA for Buildings A and B before November twenty-three? What is the remaining resin commercial GFA for Buildings A and B after November twenty-three? What is the now proposed total resin other GFA now sought for Building C? I assume that they have that information if they're reviewing this application. I have not gotten a response to that app, to, to that request.
You're aware that they have not submitted any comments to us?
I am not aware that they have submitted a comment to you.
They have not.
And I'm not-
Just for your own-
No, they've not com- they, they, I, I understand that's the case and I understand they have not responded to my request for information.
Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Okay, thanks, Mr. Morrison. Okay, thanks, Mr. Morrison. You've given a lot for Mr. Doherty to...
Well, thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
So now invite Sonia Pace. Morning, Ms. Pace.
Good, thank you. Just gonna move this. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So my name's Sonia Pace, and I'm the co-chair of the Richmond Gardens Rapaires Association, and I live at 24 Widdicombe Hill, and I'm speaking today on behalf of our whole membership. We are asking the committee to deny the variances, to reconstruct residential units on the mechanical penthouse level of Building C. They are not minor, and they do not meet the four tests under the Planning Act. They actually violate the intent of the official plan and council adopted bylaw of 834-2021. They undermine the comprehensive development that council approved, and they ignore this committee's June 2025 decision, which already rejected similar variances and recognized the risks of this piecemeal planning for this site. In 2021, after years of work between the applicant, the community, city staff, and Create Toronto, council approved the bylaw 834-2021 for the comprehensive redevelopment of Richview Square. That approval struck a balance: three mid-rise buildings of 11, 11, and 12 stories, part of the existing plaza retained, and space for retail uses, including a promised supermarket in Building C. The community supported this balanced plan and agreed not to appeal, trusting the development would proceed as approved. Instead of building what council approved for 2250 Wincott and Eglington, the applicant has returned repeatedly to the Committee of Adjustment with piecemeal changes. Since 2022, five variance applications and one rezoning application in January 2023, proposing to double the unit count and build towers up to 31 stories. Examples include variances to reduce loading spaces in Building C, a request to sever the property into four lots and create multiple rights-of-way, now under OLT appeal, a November 23rd variance that you heard about from Barry, that added 130 new residential units to Building C by collapsing commercial space and eliminating the promised supermarket. And most recently, in June 2025, a request for major parking reductions and other changes, which this committee rightly refused for undermining comprehensive planning. This refusal is also under OLT appeal. The application today seeks, which is the sixth variance request, by the way, the applicant is asking for the technical variances to Building C. Again, this is to increase total and residential floor area, increase the height of Building C, and expand the rooftop area to allow residential use in what was approved only as a mechanical penthouse. Council approved the Building C at 12 stories. Through previous variances, the applicant has already pushed it to 13 stories and added 130 units. Converting the mechanical penthouse into residential space would effectively create, technically, a 14th floor, a major change from what council approved. If the penthouse is no longer required for mechanical use, the top floor should be eliminated, not to repurpose for residential units. Allowing residence units at the highest point overlooking adjacent homes was never contemplated in 2021 and represents a significant departure from the approved build form. The applicant's land use planner does not provide any planning justification for relocating residential units on what was intended as additional height solely for mechanical penthouse. Additionally, the applicant fails to make clear that they intend to house the geothermal system in the parking garage, reducing residential and visitor parking, repeating requests that this committee already rejected in June. In summary, we respectfully ask the committee to refuse these variances. They undermine the 2021 council-approved vision, which resulted from years of collaboration between the city, the developer, and Create Toronto. The variances themselves are not minor. They increase gross floor area, increase residential height above the permitted maximum, and expand rooftop residential use, never contemplated by council. Most importantly, since this application has filed the rezoning application in 2023, any modifications to this bylaw should be dealt with comprehensively, sorry, through the rezoning...
Ms. Pace, you have 20 seconds.
Okay, should be dealt with at the council. So none of these decisions should be made, again, piecemeal, as it does undermine the whole integrity of the full project. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just before you leave, panel, any questions or comments for Ms. Pace?
Okay, you mentioned that the changes would not meet the official plan?
That's correct.
You expand on that?
Because this is going beyond what was already approved through the official plan amendments and zoning amendments at the 2021 council decision.
Okay, thank you. You take your seat, and we'll invite Mr. Doherty up for rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Barry and Sonia for your comments and making the time today. I'll do my best to respond to all of the points, and if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So the question, why more GFA? And why are we requesting this increase in GFA? Again, this is a technical thing with the bylaw. So bylaw 569-2013, there's a number of things that can be deducted from gross floor area. One of those things is mechanical equipment as well as amenity space. So in the previous plan, that mechanical floor was occupied by mechanical space and amenity space, which is therefore deducted from gross floor area in the bylaw. However, that floor now has residential units on it, which cannot be deducted from GFA. So hence why we're asking for the 700 square meters of increase. In terms of the comments about the underground, actually, I'll get to this first. The variance for 13 stories. We have not previously seeked a variance to increase the height of Building C. The height of Building C is limited on a metric basis only. So as I mentioned, it's 43 meters with six meters of mechanical amenity projection above that. Unlike Buildings A and B, it does not have a story restriction. So through the SPA process and through the previous minor variance, it was decided that there would be 13 stories that can fit within the existing zoning envelope. And so now, this variance application, as I mentioned, is seeking to convert no longer needed space on the mechanical level into dwelling units. Regarding geothermal, and I'd be happy if staff were to pull up the underground plan, but, and I hope I mentioned this in my presentation, but most of the geothermal equipment is actually located below the underground garage. There's actually only a very, I would call it a very small room on the underground parking level, which is the geothermal room, and it does not have a substantive impact on parking. In fact, in our SPA set, it was previously shown as a mechanical room. So it's not having an impact to the previous decision that the committee gave a couple of months ago on the parking matters. I just wanted to make that clear. In terms of the supermarket, so this was something that was discussed through the previous rezoning process. I would add that it's not really a matter related to this application, but I'm happy to speak on it. The applicant actually tried to find a supermarket for this site and was unable to find a tenant who wanted to lease this space, so plans had to change, and that is quite common. And what I would add is that there is still a substantive retail component on this site, both in Building C and collectively across all of the buildings. Just gonna try to get... And then about height. And yes, I understand that height was a substantive issue on the previous rezoning approval. Again, one of the merits we see in this application is that it is fitting within the existing zoning envelope approved by council. The mechanical level is going to be lower in height. It's going to continue to fall within the angular plane, which is to provide transition to the sensitive low-rise uses to the east of the site across Wincott Drive. And in terms of the official plan and guidelines, I'm sure this committee has heard this. The city actually has new mid-rise guidelines for this site, and this is something that, you know, we didn't even mention in our submissions, but the new mid-rise guidelines would actually permit an even taller building on this site than what's permitted. Because of the right-of-way width of Eglington is so wide, the mid-rise guidelines say 14 stories is appropriate. We're not asking for that. We're simply asking to reallocate what's within the zoning envelope. So I hope I got everything. If I didn't, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Panel, questions, comments for Mr. Doherty? Okay, thank you. So I think we can now go into committee for some discussion, I guess, and a motion. Yeah, Mr. Doherty, we're in committee now, so we're not going to be calling. If something does come up, I'll invite you up, but you can take your seat. I guess my thinking is, just looking at the, I mean, this project has a long history, but just looking at what's before us today, four variances. I don't have any difficulties determining them to be minor. So I guess that's just kind of my uptake.
So Chair, unless other members of the panel have comments or discussions regarding the variances, because that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the four variances that are before us today. I know that both Barry Morrison, as well as Sonia Pace, made really good presentations. They raised a lot of issues. And in my view, they're asking the question cumulatively, are we still within council's wisdom of approval? Or are we changing what council originally approved? And in my view, what's before us today is appropriate at this committee. This is why we're here, to look at the variance, minor variances that are being requested. And I think our task is to ensure that council's direction or council's approval are not, that we don't move away from that approval in any way. And the four variances that are before us, I believe, are minor. Now, I don't know if members of the panel have anything else to say, particularly with very well-presented positions of the two speakers, that cumulatively, what are we doing here? Are we actually keeping council's desire within that approval that they originally gave? Or are we straying away from it?
Thanks, Mr. Goey. Any other comments or observations?
My observation is, I'm just concerned as well about the piecemeal variance request, and that it's a project like this, it would really be best to see the tally of the impact of all the variances requested. And I'm concerned, I'm a bit torn because of the piecemeal applications of the variances and then not really being able to assess the impact of the request on, I guess, the yet unbilled, I assume, Building A and B. So that's my only kind of comment and reservation about this.
That's a good observation, obviously, but I guess my point would be, to what extent does that offend any of the four tests?
So Chair, it's incumbent upon us to look at the four variances that are before us. We really depend on professional advice and direction from city planning, and they're always there to provide us with that direction. I just also have to mention the fact that planning have not commented on it. I'm sure that city planning is tracking all these variances that come before us, and they report, they submit reports to us if we're really straying away. And in this case, we have four variances. We should be examining the variances on their individual merit in terms of whether or not they do meet the test individually and collectively. That's what we have before us. That's the task before us today.
The part of the test is whether or not the proposal is desirable for the appropriate development or use of the land or in our building, and that's the part where the piecemeal presentation is, that I have questions about.
Respect that comment.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Dalton, anything to say on this?
I just had a question.
A question for who?
Let's make a comment here.
Okay.
We've heard about the fact the supermarket...
Put your microphone on.
The supermarket is no longer part of it. Do these variances have any impact on whether that changed or doesn't change? Because we could be dealing with a place that's a food desert. That's why I'm curious. If we approve these variances, does that impact whether or not it would allow at some future point a supermarket there?
Chair, I don't think we should be speculating what happens in the future. This is what we have today. Does it change the mass? Does it change the heights substantially? Does it change issues with respect to overlook? Does it change us with respect to privacy, impact, shadows, things of that nature? There are four variances before us. I think we have to stick to the four variances that are being requested. And does it change the overlook of the building? And I stress, mass and height. Will the height change really impact anyone at that height where we're at right now? And as we've heard also, the floor will be lowered, the top floor, that is being considered for residential. The unit count is not changing. The additional increase is 700 square meters.
Good points.
Okay, are we ready to...
Chair, prepare to make a motion. I did spend a lot of time reviewing this application beforehand, and I also did look at the history of the previous approvals, not just in this pocket, but the overall area. And I know that the impact of this on the residential area to the north has been a very serious issue that city planning has considered, because there is a stable neighborhood to the north, a stable, single-family residential neighborhood. But this parcel of land is on a high-order transit corridor, a very important high-order transit corridor. That doesn't mean that we're not taking into consideration the single-family homes that are to the north, to the south of this transportation corridor. As the Committee of Adjustment, our task is to examine these four variances that are before us today, look at them individually, determine whether or not they meet the test, and then look at them collectively, and do they meet the test collectively? And I know that one of the issues that we've discussed at length here today here is the impact of cumulative variances, approvals. Does it change your overall project? And in my view, these variances that are before us today would not change the vision of this project. I think they are indeed technical. The increase in GFA of 700 square meters is technical. I don't think the impact, there is impact on height in terms of oversight, visibility, privacy. Does it change the look of the building from the street line? Does it change the look of the building from the street level? I don't think it does. Chair, I'm going to move that the variances, and, and it's been very difficult, I, I have to tell you, because I am aware of a lot of comments and concerns from residents in the area. We've heard about them. I, I believe that I've dealt with this application in the past. I've been at committee since 2015, and, and I've seen a lot of these applications as well. But I believe that the four variances that are before us today are indeed appropriate. They're desirable. So I will move approval of the four variances. And there's no urban forestry conditions. There are no urban forestry conditions. There are no conditions from any department. There is just a commentary from MetroLinks, which is really advisory. So move approval, authorize the four variances with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion approved by vote of four to one. Many thanks to Mr. Doherty, Mr. Morrison, and Ms. Pace for your excellent presentations. Sure. Okay, let's Is that sufficient for you? Okay, we're gonna have a five-minute break. We'll resume at 11:30.
Sounds good. 11:30 will work. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. We're now considering, Mr. Ross, could you take your seat, please? Thank you. We're now going to consider item 1045 Treelawn Parkway. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, including a covered porch and a cabana in the rear yard. There are six variances. We have urban forestry conditions two and three, and a MetroLinks advisory. And, uh, panel, would you agree with my observation that this is straightforward, not requiring a presentation? Any issues with that? So let's just check in with agent, Mr. Overholz.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
He said yes? Okay. I didn't hear morning, afternoon. I didn't hear anything. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Does not matter. So, Mr. Overholz, the panel does not believe it needs a presentation from you. I know there was a presentation submitted with the application, but we don't believe we need to hear an oral presentation. Are you okay with that?
I believe the eight letters support from the local community speaks to the volume of our application, that we can proceed without a presentation.
Perfect. I'm just gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments, and if not, we'll move to a decision. So panel, questions, comments, concerns? There is a speaker? No, there isn't.
No speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so. So let's hear, hear a motion.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as the application is very straightforward, meets the tests, four tests, and I should note the application as amended, subject to the forestry conditions.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick. All in favor? Application's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Overholz. Moving on to item 11. 836 to 840 The Queen's Way. Purpose is to construct a second-story rear addition above the existing building at 838 The Queen's Way, and a two-story rear addition behind the existing building at 840 The Queen's Way. There are two variances. We have a transportation review advisory regarding a future road widening on the front of this property, on the Queen's Way. However, they have stated that they don't believe these variances conflict with, with that, and we could proceed on the basis of the application. And we have one letter of opposition. And we have an area resident who wishes to speak to us, Adam Fajetti. So firstly, we'll call on the agent, Mirko Zupanczyk. Hi. Yeah, I guess in light of the opposition, a, a little presentation would be helpful.
Okay. Hello.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. Mirko Zupanczyk, 62 Sabona Drive. I am the agent for the application. The variances requested are four, the size of the residential units, which will be added to the address between 836 and 840 The Queen's Way. Essentially, at 838, there is a rooftop that is open, that the applicant has decided to place a unit on. And at 840, there is a garage, which will be taken down, and then a new two-story addition, and also filled in that portion of rooftop at 840 for a residential unit at the top. But there will be business on the other portions of the addition. So it's keeping with the height, all the rest. I don't believe there were any other variances, unless there was the third variance about entrance to those units coming off the lane, which I can't remember if the, because zoning, did they include that variance? Yes? But either way, it's the, it's the size of the dwelling units, I believe, on the second level of the roof that are in question. That's pretty much.
Is it?
Yeah.
Panel, questions? Okay, you take your seat, and we'll invite Adam Fajetti to join us. Mr. Fajetti?
Good morning. How are you?
Fine. How are you, sir?
I'm fine, thanks. Thank you for, first one to ever pronounce my name correctly right off the bat. It's usually Folgetty.
Could you just give us your address before you speak?
Yeah, it's 838 Apartment A, The Queen's Way.
Okay. So tell us what's on your mind.
Well, wife and I want to voice some of our concerns for the proposal here. We've lived here since 2009. And just again, just concerns for polls change for the living space and the current layout. The current layout, both of our bedrooms look out and have access to the patio and rear exit, you know, not only for enjoyment, but also for a case of emergency. Our concern with the proposal blueprint show that it'll now be blocked, meaning we won't have direct access to the outside from our bedrooms. We have read Ontario Building Code, and if we understand it correctly, we are worried the bedrooms might become illegal. The building code says a bedroom might have a window or agress, sorry, must have a window or aggress with direct access to outside. The proposal has our third bedroom windows leading to a mechanical room that will not be proper. Also, there is a proposed skylight shared between our two bedrooms. Our concern is will not be like the existing skylights, not shown in the blueprints. We have one in our kitchen and one in our bathroom that we don't have, we can't access because it's too high, and also doesn't open from the inside. We are worried that we won't have proper emergency escape from the new bedroom skylight. And also, the corridor leading to stairwell in the blueprints don't seem to be a direct or safe route leading to the main level. So that's our main concerns and worries in regards to the proposal of here.
Okay, that's it?
Uh, yes, sorry. First time doing this.
All right, thank you. So panel, any questions for Mr. Fajetti? Okay, then let's invite Mr. Zupanczyk up again to rebut.
To rebut. Okay, I believe the rooftop unit is, as it, it's just a roof. It's not meant for the, the residents to be using that area. So, and in terms of any, I guess, code issues with bedrooms, et cetera, I guess that will be addressed through the permit process. But in terms of anything else, like the, as you can see in the photos, they can access the roof, but it's not technically part of those apartments. It's, it's the roof space from the building. So I believe the occupants are using the roof, but it's just because there was a stair there, whatever, but it's not part of the actual apartment. That's my understanding from the owner and from the people that are there, so.
Okay, anything else?
No. I think, as I said, I hear, heard his concerns about any access and egress, which I believe will be addressed during the permit process, so.
Okay, panel, questions, comments? Thank you. So let's go into committee for a discussion if we need it, or a decision.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion. I, I move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second for Mr. Dalton's motion? Mr. Gully, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12. 18 Murray Street. Eighteen Murray Street. Purpose is to construct a two-story rear addition to the existing dwelling. There's one variance requested for a variance from the requirements for the required side yard setback. I would certainly like to ask for a justification or for that, but do we need a presentation? We're good? Okay. Charlotte Watson is the agent.
Yeah, we're here.
You're Charlotte?
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good.
So, we don't need a presentation from you, if that's okay? But we do have, at least, I have a question. Are you okay to proceed without presenting to us?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So you've only got one variance. I'd just like to know why you require this fifty percent plus reduction to the west side lot line.
So it's, our existing wall is already at that setback, and we're just trying to continue the existing wall.
Yep, understood. Any other questions? And there's no speakers in the room or at home? Okay. So let's have a motion.
Sure, I'll make one. I believe the application is very straightforward, and as such, meets the four tests, and I would move a motion for approval, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a secondary for Mr. Dalton's motion? Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimously approved?
Cool.
Okay, moving on to item thirteen. Seven Leggett Avenue. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing detached dwelling, a two-story rear addition, and a two-story addition along the west side of the property. There are six variances. We have urban forestry in their consolidated memo requesting refusal or in the alternative condition two. And then in a freestanding memo dated September third, they suggested as an alternative condition one. And our practice is where urban forestry has conflicting advice to us, as is the case here. We let staff sort that out, and we just, if we're moving toward approval, we would merely request urban forestry conditions and not be specific. So, I guess again, my thinking on this one is straightforward, not requiring a presentation. Are we all in accord with that? So I'll invite the agent. Mikhailo Zirk.
There, it's Mikhailo Zeruk, the owner of Seven Leggett Avenue. I'll be representing myself.
Okay. We just concluded that your application's pretty straightforward, and we don't need a presentation. You have an opportunity to say anything if you wish to, but we don't need to hear from you. We may have a question or two for you, but are you okay to, for us to proceed without a presentation?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, then let's do that. So, panel, any questions or comments?
Just a comment that you mentioned six variances, but in the updated materials we got, they're deleting variance five. So there's five variances. Just wanted to note that.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We'll have the revisions page up on the screen in a moment here.
I missed that. So our decision is with respect to a revised application? Yep. So, yeah, there's five variances now.
Variance five is eliminated, right? Correct?
If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion on this.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to accept this application. I find it to be minor nature in consensus with the four tests, subject to whichever forestry condition they clarify, one or two.
Thank you. Secondary for Ms. Reddick's motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, thank you, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Zirk. Moving on to item fourteen. Forty-seven Bellman Avenue. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling, then attach garage and a covered deck and a cabana in the rear yard. There are two variances. There was a previous decision on this property on March sixth of this year, and I've documented the differences, but I think it would be helpful for the agent. You're Mr. Dome?
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, if you could just, well, present whatever you wish, but at least tell us the difference between the March twenty-sixth decision and what you're applying for today.
Of course.
I believe on March sixth, your application was refused.
That's correct.
And it included a garden suite.
That is correct.
In my recollection, is that garden suite was really the contentious aspect.
So the garden suite was actually not the contentious aspect. It was more to do with the north side yard setback. And that has been removed.
You know what? I just surmised, I may not have even been here, anyway.
Yeah, the neighbor contention did revolve around the north side yard setback and the garden suite, but both of those conditions have been removed in the new application. But I can just go over a quick background.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Here, that's, the previous application had six variances and was refused by committee in March. And as I mentioned, the only stated committee concern with that application was in relation to the zero point nine meter north side yard setback. And the owner has since worked to revise the proposal to come up with an acceptable compromise, which reduces impact while still meeting family needs. Four of the previous six variances have been eliminated, including the north side yard setback variances, and to shorten the remaining length variance from eighteen point nine nine meters to eighteen point five one meters. There was previously the garden suite, including the application, and that's been removed to address the neighbors' concerns. Two modest variances are now requested. A seven point seven three meter height variance and an eighteen point five one meter length variance. These are smaller practical adjustments intended to meet modern living needs, and they are not major departures from the zoning bylaw, and do fall well within the spirit and intent of the regulations. The height variance is a zero point two three meter difference between the as-of-right height of seven point five meters, and as such, would have a negligible impact. This is within the character of the areas, right across the street, two houses north. For example, number fifty-six A and B were approved for heights of nine point one five meters and front main wall heights of eight point one three meters. Fifty-two A and B have, also have sloped roof heights. They were approved for nine point five meters. The height variance is further mitigated by the fact that the front and side yard setbacks of the dwelling and rear covered porch, they do now fully comply with the bylaw. The design of the dwelling mitigates impact as the top of the eaves are located essentially at the bylaw height, slightly higher, perhaps a couple of centimeters. If we can look at the west and the north elevations on screen.
Continue, we're gonna bring them up for you.
Okay, thank you. The height is broken up by the eaves, and the features flanking the entrance, they are located toward the middle of the dwelling, not close to the side lot lines. The length variance only represents a modest one point five one meters over the bylaw. This is a very deep lot at ninety point five six meters. The comments received by committee at the last hearing was that the length was understandable, given the lot depth, and that was for the previously proposed length of eighteen point nine nine meters. And so that has now been reduced to eighteen point five one meters to further mitigate impact. It fits well within the immediate context of fifty-two A and B Bellman right across the street, which were approved for eighteen point four meters in length for full two-story massings on shorter lot depths. Similar lengths are existing for fifty A and B, and so there are four dwellings in a row right across the street with similar length. So we feel that this does demonstrate the proposal fits within the character of the street. And mitigating impact further is the fact that we have the side setbacks comply with the bylaw, the front yard setback complies with the bylaw, the garden suite that was previously proposed has been entirely removed. Planning staff have no concerns with the application before and also in its current form. And overall, we feel that the application today is reasonable in minor nature and meets the four tests, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions, panel? Comments, no? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have two in-person neighbors, the neighbors on either side of this property. So if I could invite Maria Mangiardi first? Good morning, Ms. Mangiardi.
Good morning.
You could just confirm your address for us?
Sure. Forty-nine Bellman Avenue.
Okay.
Right next door to the new house, the new development.
Okay, so what are your issues with respect to these variances?
I'll just read, because I've been sitting here long. My back's killing me, so. Let me just read. So my name is Maria Mangiardi. I live at forty-nine Bellman Avenue with my husband, Bruno, who's over there. We live right directly beside the proposed new build, at forty-seven Bellman. So I'm here today to respectfully voice my opposition to the requested variances. Please know that I respect this process and the forum. The two per proposal requests are two variances. To extend the building length to eighteen point five one meters, when only seventeen meters is permitted. And to increase the height to seven point seven three meters, when the maximum allowed is seven point five meters. In addition, the plans include a covered back porch that extends another seven point nine meters beyond the primary structure, complete with a roof and balcony. Altogether, from the front of the house to the back, the length would reach twenty-six point two meters. I do not understand why this has not been listed as an additional variance, since it clearly extends the overall structure far beyond what is reasonable. When I open my side door, I will be confronted with a high wall, a fortress of sorts, blocking my view and creating an imposing constant presence beside my home. On paper, these numbers may seem like simple measurements, but for me, as a neighbor living right next door, these numbers are significant. We are retired couple who spend much of our time at home, especially in our kitchen, which faces the north side of this proposed two-story structure. The extra height and extended length will cast significant shadows over our windows, taking away the natural light that we rely on each day. This will directly affect our comfort, our well-being, and our quality of life. As you know, natural light is not just a convenience, it is essential for health. For seniors, reduced sunlight can contribute to both physical and mental health challenges. Increased reliance on artificial lighting, fewer opportunities to enjoy simple activities like cooking, reading, and gardening, and greater, adds greater risk of seasonal depression. This proposal creates a continuous wall-like effect across the length of our property. It does not fit harmoniously with the rest of the neighborhood. It reduces our privacy, erodes the sense of outdoor space that we now call home. As a longstanding resident, I ask council to consider not just the proposed numbers, but the real human impact. Living with the loss of light and the looming presence of this structure will pose significant burdens. I urge council to uphold the zoning bylaws that were carefully implemented and to deny these variances. Please protect our right as homeowners to the enjoyment of our property without being overshadowed by walls. I respect, thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, just before you leave, panel, any questions or comments? Just one comment.
Of course.
Yeah, with respect to the height of this building that's being proposed, you're aware that it's about that much taller than the bylaw?
What about the length?
I'm only asking you about the height.
I know, but it's right.
And just responding, you're talking about, you know, sunlight.
It's a foot. It's a foot.
Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna hear now from the neighbor on the other side.
Okay.
Ursula Organisjak, sorry if I've mispronounced your name. You stood up, so I must have been close.
Okay, good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ursula Organisjak. Okay, my name is Ursula Organisjak. I live in forty-five Bellman Avenue with my husband. Our house is right beside the proposed new house, is forty-seven Bellman. If this house will be built, our small bungalow will be stuck between two biggest houses. We will lost a lot of sunlight. When the house forty-three Bellman was built, our home becomes so dark. And we add some skylights. We are retired, and we don't want to put more skylights, to have natural light. I ask council to follow the bylaw and say no to those variants. Please help us keep the light at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before you leave, any questions or comments?
Both your homes are bungalows, right, on either side?
Correct.
Yeah. You realize that there's a redevelopment all over the city? Those bungalows were built back in the forties, fifties?
Fifties.
Fifties. It's tough to see change in your neighborhoods. We understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we will call back Mr. Dome for rebuttal opportunity?
Yes, thank you. I would like to first thank the neighbors, Maria, Bruno, and Ursula, for sharing their thoughts, and we do respect their perspective and appreciate they care deeply about their home and their community. The owner has tried to have, to be considerate and cooperative throughout this process and to have worked to design a home that is compatible with the street. The owner has spoken to the neighbors about the proposal and the efforts made at compromise. To address the point about the covered back porch that was mentioned, it is an open outdoor covered porch and isn't designed entirely as of right. It is not part of the home's interior living space, and therefore doesn't require an additional variance, and its purpose is to provide shade in a comfortable outdoor space for family use. And addressing concerns about shadowing and light, we do understand natural light is important. And, but we would like to point out the orientation of the property, the slight increase in the height and the length will not significantly reduce the natural light to their home over what is allowed as of right. And to further respect privacy and comfort, the owner is committed to planting additional landscaping and maintaining the fencing along the shared property line. landscaping and maintaining the, the fencing along the shared property line to create a natural buffer. Privacy screening on the second floor, as of right balcony, is also an acceptable condition if committee sees fit to include. We, overall, we feel that this project does represent a modest improvement that balances family needs with the character of the neighborhood, and we respectfully ask the committee to approve these two variances so we can move forward in a positive way.
Thank you, Mr. Dome. Panel, any final questions for Mr. Dome?
The Chair brought up the point of height. You haven't really addressed the length approach where you're asking for, why do you need that kind of significant increase in the length?
So that is to add space for the, the primary bedroom and the, the family, the dining and family room as well. The length is, is, I mentioned in earlier, across the street, there are basically four dwellings that have almost an identical length as well that were approved.
Just offhand, you know, with the, the lot length is here?
I believe it's over ninety meters.
Ninety meters. Very, very deep lots.
That's correct.
I guess on the south side, that ninety meter has two homes, back to back. And here, they're just singles, south of there, but it's okay. South of Valermo, there's one lot where your client is, but south of Valermo, that same space has two homes back to back, two lots back to back, whereas here, there's one lot.
And I would also point out that even across the street, the, the lot depths are a lot smaller.
Panel, anything else by way of question or comment? Okay, thank you. We'll now go into committee and have a discussion if we need it and make a decision. So any thoughts before we decide or?
Chair, I, I feel that it is very modest in terms of what they're asking. The length, even though it goes past the residential, I mean, the set, and I understand how they feel, because all of a sudden now there's a new building, and one of the speakers also has a new building next to her as well. Fact of the matter is that they are very long lots. The length variance that's being requested meets the test as far as I'm concerned. The roof height, very small increase of point two-three. I think what's being requested is fair.
Anything else?
We're gonna make a motion unless there are any comments.
We're good? Go for it.
There are only two variances. I did listen to the neighbors very carefully, and I really do feel for them, really do feel for them, because you're, the original buildings that were built in that subdivision, they're, they're bungalows, and you've been there for many, many years. You've enjoyed that, that feeling. But as far as the development of this lot is concerned, we're applying standards now to try to accommodate families of the right size. And you've come here with two variances, way improvement to the original application that you have, that the applicant had before. Two variances being requested, one is in terms of length, one is in terms of height. I think both variances are very fair. I'm gonna move that the application be approved with no condition, oh, sorry, with urban forestry condition. Approval with forestry condition.
Yep, okay. Secondor for Mr. Gully? Mr. Dome? Yep, all in favor? Refused? Okay, approved, vote of four to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, I'd like to, I have a random attendee online, and I'm not sure what they, what role they play, because I don't have them on my list, so I'm gonna do a quick mic check on them. Microphone check for the user Bahard. Bahard, go ahead. Okay, Mr. Chair, I think we found out the problem here, and they've maybe just logged in.
Who is this person?
It looks like the agent for number eight. Yeah, agent for number eight, who was here in person. So I'm not sure what's going on there. Okay, thank you.
We're a second. We, we haven't dispensed it with number eight. Is that right?
Yeah, we already did it at number eight. I just, they were in person, I just don't know why they're, they're also on the WebEx too, like virtual, so I just didn't, so we don't worry about it. Yeah, we're good.
Approved it.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Item fifteen it is.
Let's proceed.
We dealt with that, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go ahead with fifteen.
Yeah, we decided. He's just checking in, because he didn't.
Sorry, everybody.
That's good, no, that's fine, don't worry about it. Okay, item fifteen is two applications for consent. And this is not a, it's, it's not really a development-related application, it's severing, by the looks of it, and we'll hear a presentation, but it looks like severing one apartment building from the other one, so it's, it's really an ownership change or financing, whatever you can tell us. So you are presumably David Milano?
That's correct.
Okay, so just before you present, we have the only, I guess, two comments. We have development engineering and transportation review conditions of approval, and we have a clearance from ravine and natural features. So that's it. So, yeah, please tell us about the, your proposal.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and good afternoon, Chair and committee members. As you most mentioned, my name is David Milano. I'm a registered professional planner and an associate with Bowes Fields, and my office address is three Church Street, Suite 200. Just before I could begin, I wonder if the committee would afford possibly one to two extra minutes just to get through the presentation, noting that it is two applications, and obviously, and there was a, a letter of objection received as well, so I would just like to address that here if, if it pleased the committee.
No, you're entitled to the five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know why, this, this is pretty straightforward. I was almost gonna suggest we don't need a presentation. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
But I thought because of the easements and the, you know, the buildings and everything, you could just tell us generally about that.
Absolutely, I can try to keep, I can keep within the five minutes. Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, as you know, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the owner with respect to these two consent applications. Thirty-four fifteen to thirty-four ninety-nine Weston Road, which I'll refer to as phase one, as well as fifteen Vino Way and five Zapacosta Drive, which I'll refer to as phase two. So the purpose of these applications is to fulfill financial obligations related to the funding of affordable housing units within phase one. The application's proposed to sever the phase one property into two parcels, and then also create easements between the phase one and phase two properties. And I'll just note, as, as Mr. Chair, you've, you've pointed out that both these properties are developed and occupied, and there's no new development or site alteration proposed through, through these applications. If we could go, oh, perfect, thank you. So actually, if we go just back one quickly, the, the first slide just shows the, the phase one and phase two properties and their surrounding context. The lands are located on the east side of Weston Road, south of Zapacosta Drive, and about a hundred and fifty meters from the planned Finch, Finch West LRT Emery Station. Next slide, please. These lands form part of a multi-phased and master-planned community. Phases one and two are occupied by residents and commercial tenants today, while phases three and four are, to the north, are currently under review. Phase one includes three mixed-use rental buildings, buildings F, H, and I identified on the slide here, which include three hundred and forty-eight affordable housing units, which were funded in partnership with government agencies. Building I is twenty-eight stories and includes market rate rental units, and then there's also retail space in each of the three buildings facing Weston Road. Phase two includes two rental apartment buildings, buildings J and K, which are thirty and twenty-six stories respectively, and those were completed in twenty-twenty-three. Phase two also has a four hundred and sixty square meter community space in the ground floor. Next slide, please. So as you're aware, there's two applications proposed. The first application, B zero zero one three twenty-four EYK, is to sever the phase one lands into two parcels and create various easements between these two parcels. And then the second application, B zero zero one four twenty-four EYK, is to create easements between phase one and phase two. Next slide, please. So the purpose of these applications, and specifically for the phase one lands, would be to sever buildings F and H, so that north part of the site, where the affordable housing is located, from building I, which is at the south site. So represented by the, the green is building F and H, and the yellow is, is building I. Severing buildings F and H is required to meet the financial obligations associated with the loan agreement between the owner and the lenders, which finance the delivery of these affordable housing units in these buildings. So this is required essentially so that the lenders can each hold securities on, on independent properties. I'll just note as well, these buildings, as I said, are occupied, they'll continue to function as they do today with no impact or interruption to the current residents or tenants. The easements will be created between the north parcel and the south parcel to maintain the operation of the building and establish access to things like parking, storage lockers, and amenity space. And again, no, no development or site alterations are contemplated by these applications. Next slide, please. The second application would create easements between phase one and phase two. So the purpose of this is because when the rezoning application for phase two was approved, it required that ninety-two parking spaces be provided for the use of residents of phase one. So this application would just establish those access rights for phase one residents to these ninety-two parking spaces that currently exist in, in the phase two development. Next slide, please. So in summary, as I mentioned, the purpose of the applications is to sever the site in order to fulfill financial obligations between the owner and the lenders, which has been contemplated since the early stages of this development. The requested applications would not impact the current day-to-day use by residents, and nor do the applications propose any new development. We've also worked closely with staff over the past year and a half or so to ensure that these applications meet the city's requirements, and as you'll see in the, the staff reports, they have no objections to the proposals. We've also reviewed the conditions by ECS staff and, and agree with those conditions. And then just before concluding, I just want to add one final point, which is that obviously we've received the, the letter of opposition from Mr. Rosen on behalf of the neighboring landowner. So I just want to emphasize that, that these applications won't have an impact on the, the current parking in the site, and that these applications will create the easements for parking that have long been contemplated between the two phases of development. So as a result of these applications, there won't be any new construction within the site, and therefore no additional traffic from residents or visitors or construction vehicles. And as you'll see, obviously, in the applications, that we have not requested any variances, and, and the site complies with all of the parking requirements. So I'll conclude there, but thank you for the opportunity to speak on the application.
Thank you. Fourteen seconds to speak.
Just beat it.
And Mr. Chair, I just like, want to point out, we did get a last-minute comment from on Hydro One, and they're just advising that any placement of permanent structures, facilities, or landscaping within the transmission corridor is prohibited without the prior written approval of HONI, so just, so you're aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Milano? We're good? Okay, then let's go into committee for a decision. It's actually, I think, one decision on two applications, fifteen A and B.
So what we're looking here are really technical issues with respect to severance for financial and severance for sharing of rights of ways. No variances are being triggered. So Chair, prepare to make a motion. Move that the severance applications be approved subject to standard conditions and development engineering conditions of July twenty-second, subject to that.
Yeah, just on the, the development engineering and transportation review, and you cited a date. I'm wondering if, just take a look at it, in additional materials, we received something from... That was July?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're aware that July twenty-two corresponds, right? And updated?
Through the chair, yes, that's right. So the, we were, the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, which updated the previous ECS report.
Yeah, you're aware, thank you.
Okay, so I think you captured it.
Search to that move approval.
Good. Secondor?
Do you want to just advise me?
Advisor, yeah. Secondor for Mr. Gully's motion. Ms. Reddick, thank you, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Thank you.
We'll wait for our colleague to return. Okay. So item sixteen is one sixty-seven Church Street, parts one and two, and one sixty-seven Church Street, parts three and four. We have an application for consent, a revised application for consent, and two revised applications for minor variances. One, one related to parts one and two, the other related to parts three and four. We have urban forestry conditions two and three, development engineering and transportation review conditions, planning has okayed scheduling for today, we have four support letters, and in additional materials, we have two opposition letters, and the revised consent and minor variance applications. We'll invite to the microphone the agent Franco Romano, Mr. Romano.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the panel and staff. Franco Romano, Action Planning, three twenty-one Lakeshore.
Yeah, tell us about your project.
Certainly, so there are no revisions to the actual proposal. I think the wordsmith thing that staff have presented is the, is the revision, so the, the variances remain the same, the consent remains the same. Staff can bring up my presentation slides, please. This is a property that's located on the south side of Church Street, one block, thank you, one block west of Pine Street, which is just west of Jane Street. And in the lower air photograph on the slide, you'll see the subject site is about in the middle, it's outlined in red, and then there's a broken red line down the middle of it, where I'm showing that on the left-hand side or the west side, there is an existing two-story dwelling that is to remain, and that dwelling represents a lot coverage of about seventeen and a half percent of the proposed lot. And on the east side, there is a detached garage that's located there in about a backwards P shape that is to be removed, and a new two-story duplex is to be constructed on that lot, and that dwelling would have a lot coverage of about thirty-two percent. Where the existing driveway is located from Church, that is being relocated a little bit, and then there would be a mutual drive between the two parcels. And there are mutual drives on Church Street, I know one of the objection letters say that there aren't, but there are, and I'll show those in, in some other slides. But this, this air photograph shows the buried lot fabric, as well as the variations in dwelling design. On slide number two, you'll see that even on Church Street, but also throughout the neighborhood and on, on neighboring streets, lots that are smaller than the base zoning requirement are quite common. On Church Street, just about forty-one percent of lots are smaller than twelve meters, and that's a little less than the neighborhood. In the neighborhood, it's about forty-three point one percent. And what you'll see within the neighborhood is that the range is from four point nine meters to about ten. meters to about thirty-one meters. And on Church Street itself, it's seven point six-two meters to the thirty point four-one meters. And some of those seven point six-two meter wide lots are just one or two properties away from the subject site. So in blue, those are the lots that are twelve meters or smaller. Just around the corner on Pine Street, that's where you'll find the four point nine meters to thirteen point seven-two meters. So it's quite common for this lot fabric to contain lots that are, again, undersized relative to zoning by law for both lot frontage and lot area. I'm just showing lot frontage here, but lot area would be very similar. And seven point six-two meter wide lots fit in with that fabric quite nicely and fittingly and compatibly. And we'll see this also on slide number three. Staff, go to the next slide. On slide three, I'm showing a couple of different things, but this air photograph illustrates that we have lots near to the subject site that are seven point six-two meters, nine point one meters, twelve point one nine, and fifteen point two four meters, just within a stone's throw away from the subject site. So the proposal would fit into that lot fabric quite comfortably. The two areas in the air photograph that I've shown with green outlines, those are two, those are two areas that contain, each contain two dwellings, so four properties with a mutual drive down the middle of them. And we'll see garages in the backyard, paving in between, and landscaping that is actually less than what is being proposed on the subject site, where I'm showing that on the site plan just next to the air photograph where I'm showing the landscaping. So there is no landscaping variance for the existing dwelling that's to be maintained for the lot that's on the left-hand side of the site plan. There is a rear yard landscaping variance for the right-hand side or the proposed duplex. And again, this is quite common and it's actually larger than what we see on, in the surrounding landscape character. On the next slide, we'll see the site plan drawing and the, on this side, on this slide, north is off to the right-hand side, so that's where Church Street is. The setback variances are for the existing dwelling, the existing west side yard setbacks, so at the top at the eight centimeters. I'll see that the front yard, the existing front yard setback is six point six eight meters, so that's being maintained. And then there is a variance for six point five nine meters for part of the duplex, but that fits in right next door at six point six meters. So the front yard setback fits in quite well. On slide number five, we'll see that the proposed duplex is conventional, two stories, no integral garage because we have semi-detached garages proposed in the back, which are in excess of the side yard and rear yard setbacks that are being proposed. And that is on slide six as well. The one-story garage as well within the height and all setback additions. So the, we're in agreement with the ECS conditions, the forestry conditions, and planning staff have no concerns. So subject to any questions, I submit that the severance and the variances are appropriate and should be authorized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Romano? And Adam, I don't believe we have anyone on WebEx to speak to this one.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then, let's go into committee then and discuss if necessary or otherwise move to a motion for the consent application and the two minor variance applications.
If there are no comments, I'd like to move a motion. I believe the application is a good one. I believe the, all three applications meet the four tests, subject to the forestry and development engineering conditions.
Well, there are conditions. Urban forestry two and three?
He said that.
I said forestry.
And development engineering, okay.
Yeah. Both covered.
I'll second that in case you're wondering.
All in favor? Your applications have all been approved, Mr. Romano. Thank you.
Thank you kindly, appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Have a great day. Last but not least, item seventeen, Two Braywood Drive. Spare with me for a second. Purpose is to construct a new one-story side addition to the existing dwelling. There are three variances. This item was deferred on May first of this year to enable consultation with planning staff and to provide an opportunity to revise the application. Planning is okay with this revised application. And we have eight support letters. Yeah, so the agent is Andrew Shields.
Mr. Chair, just a quick note, too, we actually received a counselor's letter late last night that is not in your package. There it is on the screen for you.
What's, okay, I can read it here easier.
Second last paragraph is ultimately, again, I strongly support this application and feel its minor nature meeting the criteria of the four tests.
Okay, he's in support, good. Alrighty, Mr. Shields?
Yes.
Andrew Shields?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, Andrew, go ahead.
I'm Andrew Shields, Shields Architects, Three Seventeen King Street West, and the applicant, authorized agent for this application.
Okay, if you could just tell us what you've been up to since the deferral on May first?
Yes, so actually, the application that we have in front of you now is actually the same application that was here on May first. What has changed since then is that the zoning review, this is a corner lot site, the zoning review had initially taken, taken the frontage on the St. Phillips side of the, of the site. And we had, we had believed that that was incorrect and that was where a lot of the issues with planning had come from. The zoning has now been re-reviewed with Braywood Drive as the frontage, which we are in agreement with as the correct frontage. That now has meant that there is no, now only these three variances and planning no longer has any, has any issues.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Mr. Shields, no? So can we have a motion?
Oh, I'm prepared to move a motion on this, to accept this application, subject to forestry condition number two. I find it be minor nature and consistent with the four tests and well-supported by the community and council.
Are you sure about the forestry condition?
It said, well, it's forestry condition, I won't put a name to it, but I thought there was a forestry condition. I can stand corrected if there's none, but I had it noted of a forestry condition.
I don't, I don't think there are.
There is none? Okay, then, then no conditions.
No conditions.
Perfect. Secondor from Ms. Riddick's motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dalton, thank you, all in favor? That is unanimously approved. Thank you all, and we, I call for a motion to adjourn.
I move a motion to adjourn, I'll be the new Laura.
It doesn't need to be seconded, all in favor? You don't want to, Rick, you want to stick around?
Thank you, members.
I had a this hand.
Okay. This, this meeting is adjourned unfortunately, twelve twenty-nine PM. It's conflict of interest.